Educating, Informing, Serving. TV Keeping Government Honest.
I'm going to call this meeting to order at 6:30. I am going to take notes that are important as we go through. But then tomorrow night, I've already talked to these folks and I'm going to be able to see this video on the website to fill in anything I missed. So I'll put the notes together tomorrow night and we'll see about getting them to Bill. It's kind of what I'm planning on for the notes.
Okay.
All right. And again, Chuck is not here because Chuck got called by his boss at the last minute. He had to do something tonight, covering a meeting with something of that nature. So I have a number...oh, I have a number one approval of the agenda. Before we through the agenda, I would like to add...yeah, go ahead. Do you need extras?
I don't think anything.
Okay. I've got the agenda. Okay. I'd like to add a Roman numeral nine executive session for personnel reasons. All right. With that edit, I'd like to have the agenda approved. Is that it?
So move.
And on favor?
Aye.
Well, wait.
Yes, go ahead.
The minutes that were proven is that the correct date, September 13?
No, and I didn't change it here. So that 13 should be a 10. You're right. I got the wrong date on that. I just checked that and realized that mistake. With the two edits, motion approved.
So move.
All in favor?
Aye.
And that takes care of that piece. Public comment?
Yeah. Do you have any comment?
My sex grant.
Congratulations.
I didn't bring hard copies of the minutes. They are up on the website. They've been there since the original time. I've gone through others. Any questions, concerns, comments?
I got abstentions because I wasn't here.
Okay. Approval of the minutes as presented on the website?
So move.
In favor with one abstention. Three in favor.
Aye.
Aye. I'm moving through quickly, sorry. And we have one abstention, three in favor. That's a majority even if we don't have a fully staffed here. Public comment again, we all sit there. Correspondence communications, I don't have any.
I didn't see any in the box.
Thank you for looking.
But I will on a regular basis.
I appreciate that.
I'm just curious, service works for you.
Oh, it's fantastic. All right. Updates, Wyndham Regional.
I don't know. I can't think of anything. There's a note. There has been...I should mention that there have been one meeting and I think this week was a follow-up kind of meeting that actually, the first one, which I probably show all of, which was having to do with habitat connectivity and forest blocks. It was a guest speaker at the commissioner's meeting in October. Unless, sorry about that.
So it'd be from like the A and R kind of thing or was it?
Yes, it was A and R.
Is that recorded somewhere?
Pardon me?
Is that recorded to you?
I don't think so, no.
Well, we've discussed it. We've got it in our plan. This is now in the select board. So at this point, we're feeling still pretty comfortable that we've met. Was Act 171?
I think so. It will be a question of how we and Select Board might implement various portions of connectivity such as buying easements or encouraging certain lengths of land that hitch various blocks together, stay as a forested entity so that critters can pass.
Well, it's going to be talked about later in the meeting because I think everybody knows that we've been asked to give a rationale of our map. And there are...we'll talk about it in depth, but one of the big things is we took the Biofinders' high priority forest blocks and made that resource.
So yeah, another point is that even though we are blanketed with those forest blocks, it doesn't mean that we can't micromanage within them.
True. Yeah, that's going to be a lot of discussion, I'm guessing, especially in the Select Board because there is a lot of concern with our map and so they really want to know what does that really mean and how does that affect them. All right. DRB?
There's been no absence since the last meeting. We do have one pending subdivision. It is being worn for December, Fisher Street.
Oh, really? Oh, she's breaking that up?
Yeah. And I think it'll be a minor.
Okay. Non-controversial for your points of view?
I don't agree.
I haven't seen any of the details.
No. Oh. For sale still or are they breaking it up to sell it in parcels or you don't know that piece either?
I think it's been sold. So I was curious what you think. I think the for sale down there is basically the firm, firm house and maybe it's makers. The subdivision has to do with the entire state.
Then I don't even...is the state in one parcel or multiple? And we don't...we didn't...but it's a lot of land out there through there that family owns, so. All right.
But that on the DRB front, that's the only thing pending.
Okay. Thank you very much. How about wastewater? Anything new on that? Been a couple of months since we've met.
We concluded the water sample, the water testing for the village pumping ordinance district. Total of 60 wells were tested. Big picture, there was no evidence of fecal contamination, i.e. septic contamination of wells within the village. There was also no E. coli. There was one well that did test positive both on the initial and retest for bacteriological contaminant. There was no issue with radiological anywhere. And there were some trace elements of inorganic, I think lead and copper in a few of the wells, but not significant.
And so, I mean, from a scientific point of view, say, well, no impact, no danger, let's move on. But that's obviously not the next step. I've looked at this data. What are you thinking about?
Well, now we're going to look at the septic situation in the village, examining all the septic systems, looking at the age of each system, when, you know, when they were put in, what type it was, what modifications or repairs have been made.
That information's available through town or you got to be resident by resident?
Yeah, we're going to have to do some digging. Some of it will be on file in the town offices. Kim and I will be working next Monday, I think, in the vault.
Yeah, there was a big state law change about 20 years ago and probably anything after that is probably on file.
And then we'll just use resident expertise, you know, within the village from people who have worked on the foundation, who have knowledge of the changes of the systems that have been put in there because they've done significant work on that front as far as consolidating.
Because we're running out of time anyways, for the survey piece. But it's not my call. It's everybody's call. Is...do you have any that would be worth considering for your group? Because it's planning grants and that's seems to me, I don't know, Eric, you've been on the Dean Award tonight, appropriate, inappropriate?
I would think it would be appropriate.
If needed. Force it down if really you don't need it. Maybe you go back to the...and have that discussion and see what needs are so we work together.
Okay. We would definitely like to have a representative piece of the survey when it gets done as far as what the settlement is regarding at least village water and water systems.
All right. Let's talk briefly about the survey, not a lot, to be honest with you. Anything else about it?
That's it.
I may sound like stepping on a third rail. This is a group I put together called Update Reports and I have three there. Chris, since you're on the Select Board, you know, I was thinking, should that be a kind of a brief standing monthly thing for communication? Anything you want to tell us, important? We got a bunch that we're all very aware of, so you don't have to go into that piece. But anything beyond that? We're going to talk a great deal about the town plan, obviously.
Yeah, I mean, that's the...
That's the thing?
Thing.
All right. So I don't want to waste your time and then get redundant unless there's anything else because we're going to jump into that and then move on. All right. Anything else? Hey.
How are you? Warm up today?
All right. You got a copy, you're all set. We are moving on to unfinished business, town plan. I have an agenda here that I put together and a lot has happened since that was put together. So in general, the...what I'd like to do is maybe not look so much at the details that I wrote and we'll start with an update and maybe Chris can start, I can add in if necessary. I've got some stuff and the bottom line is we've been given two directives which we need to address and figure out how we're going to attack tonight. That is the primary thing beyond that, whatever we need to do.
You're talking about the tier reports or?
Yes. In the last meeting, I think I sent them to all of you, right? The two directives. One is to do a report presumably similar to the Wyndham Town Report. And the other is a second report explaining how we came up with the mapping for the proposed I can call them up on my email. You know what I'm talking about or?
Yeah, I thought there was another report detailing changes from the previous.
Right. Yeah, I said that's the report I'm talking about that, as I understood it, they would like us to use the Wyndham Town Report to model in terms of the technical format and how we present that. And I think I sent that to everybody, the Wyndham Town Report?
Yes, I did read it.
Okay. I'll...it's...basically, it's a chapter by chapter summary. Chapter one, land use looks different than the old chapter because of these things. Well, chapter two, economy looks different because...and that's the format that they used. So that's all that was. All right.
Let up. We are on track for a public hearing on the 15th of December.
12?
Or the 12th of December, I'm sorry, because we have a drop dead date of 15 January. That's where it comes in.
So this is where I get confused and I'm going to ask you...yeah, here we go. All right. So you...
The 15th is a Saturday?
I think it's the 12th.
Oh.
Yeah. Pretty sure it's the 12th.
Well, December 12th is the public.
Two things. The final public hearing, assuming there is no changes to the town plan. You have the right to change it again at that meeting, but if you do, then you have to warn another meeting the 15 or 30 days. I don't know the time limit's out. That's the concern because if you do change it, then you're pushing up against the January 15th day, which is then...
Then the whole process would have to start over because that's...we have one year.
That's automatic rejection.
Right.
Ends up back in our lap, which means we can just say, fine, it's back in our lap, we resubmit it and their clock starts all over again and we go through that. But then there's the November 14th town meeting. So how does that fit into all of this?
I'm not sure.
Honesty, I'm a little...because if that passes, then instead of the Select Board voting after the final hearing on the 12th, then the town votes in an Australian ballot vote. Now, if they vote, then it passes, we go forward. If they vote yes, if they vote no, I guess it ends up back in the PC's lap as if it got rejected. But I'm not sure that PC got voted.
What if it gets rejected in the town vote?
That's what you're saying.
I think it's both ways, whether the Select Board rejects it or the Australian ballot, if it gets to that rejection.
It comes back to...
It ends up like it's been rejected, that is a clear indication that the world doesn't like it. We got to figure out what they don't like and make some changes somehow, some way.
So presumably, we'd have to have a hearing to hear from people about why they voted.
We would have to...
They're voting on who the approval authority is, whether it's the Select Board or the town.
Yes. But then you're saying after that, then they have...if that passes, then they have to vote. And if they vote no, then what do we do? If the townspeople vote no.
And I think then...
So the first vote is yes and the second vote is no. The question is, what do we do? But I think we can't cross that range until, you know...
Is there a time that that starts? Like if they approve it, say that the town vote yes?
It doesn't say that in the motion.
But it should. It shouldn't say that it took place in 201.
And I know that Bill has been in a lot of communication with the town attorney about this and I'm sure he understands what's going on and...
But anybody can stand up and make a motion, say what the effective date is at that meeting.
There you go.
Like you make an amendment.
Yeah.
So you...absolutely. Why not? It is not an Australian ballot at that meeting.
That is not an Australian ballot. It's a ballot on the floor.
So anybody can modify it from the floor, which had been my original intention long, long, long ago to clarify some of this, but I've given up since then.
And if you modify it, can you vote that night or do you have to warn another?
Yeah, no, 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 because it's a modification. It's an amendment to the original motion. As long as it's valid to the original motion, you can make any amendment from the floor and vote on the amendment, then you have to vote on the amended motion.
Right. I just know this was a special vote because of the nature of it.
Yes.
Changing our charter, if you will.
Yes, but it still doesn't...because that was by Australian ballot.
But the process is the process when it's on the floor.
Yes.
Okay.
So I don't know if this board wants to make a recommendation about when that should go into effect or not. I was just assuming it would go into effect immediately and I think that's what the people who are...
I'm assuming that as well.
Yes. Unless somebody makes a change, otherwise that would be the answer.
Two motions, let me separate them out. One, and I should call them up, I've got them on my phone. Al Sands seconded, I think by Catherine, is they want a written report or explanation specifically of how our map came to be and why is it different than the old map?
The proposed land use map.
Correct. The one map that we have control over. So what I did as...to help us as a reminder is this is our new map and I probably have PDFs of more of this thing, but now you got a 17th hard copy of the thing. Everybody got them? All right. This is a cut and paste from our town plan with our land use definitions. I want to point to one very important thing on this text document. This land use definitions came from the Wyndham Regional Commission. And I clearly made this point before because I made a change in this, I want to make it again. Under resource lands, the sentence that says resource lands can be actively worked and used, that had been edited by me. So when I say these are all exactly...these are the same, that is the one change from the Wyndham Regional, is they did not have this piece about resource lands can be actively worked and used. I added that piece to lower the level of restriction.
Anxiety and anxiety.
On that, yes. To make it clear, it's your land. You can still log in, but just be aware, it's kind of special to the world, you know?
Yes, but I think that should have assaged most people's concerns.
And I understand, Al, this is the old map, just so you have a reference. My guess is when you look at these two maps and we got the big green blob and their green blob is smaller with some darker green blobs in it, the...Al's question is, why did you add all that green to this resource land? Now, I've not gotten an answer. I'm kind of bouncing around a little bit. I sent an email out. There are...I cannot find definitions for what this means. When they say that the white is rural residential, we have a definition from the Wyndham Regional what that means. I don't know what it means. It's not in the text. I couldn't find it anywhere. The only definition is that resource areas are above 1,200 feet and then they got the darker resource areas above 1,450. Beyond that, I don't know what this stuff means. So one of the things we need to do is a comparison of how this proposal, our new map, will alter the designation and how that will have an impact on things like taxes. Go. Explain me the answer. I told them, I don't know how to...how do you find that answer, folks?
Who said it changes the taxes?
This is the thing...this is the document that Bill gave me, the yellow he highlighted and said, this is what the board expects for a report, is that stuff that is highlighted. Down at the bottom, the first thing I wrote is municipal tax base. And that changed, I said, how do I find that? He says, make a meeting with the listeners and go through that. Then I started really freaking out.
That's what we have a staff person for.
Could be. I don't know if they use all the money that we have left to do that. And it may...that's what this tonight's discussion is about is legally, December 12th is the due date for this report. All right? I told Bill I would do everything I could to get it to him by December 1st because they... it's not fair to them to have to read that report live while sitting in a hearing trying to figure everything out. I didn't promise them we can do that, but that's what I'm going to try to do. So the question is, this is what in yellow this report has to look like. I'm looking for ideas on how to do this.
I don't know that we have any evidence that it does change the long-term cost or benefits to the municipality. I think that's the question they're asking, really. It's not like we're putting something new in there that's going to cost money.
So I'm going to ask you a loaded question based on what you just said. One is loaded. You ready? What was our intent?
To follow the guidelines from the Wyndham Regional Commission. That's what our intent.
All right.
Don't you agree? That's what started this all up? It wasn't like we sat around and said, oh, we need to make these changes.
Did you have...did we have any proactive intent to say, you know what, we want to make some changes, we don't like this?
No.
No, it was that...our intent was...mine was, I can only speak for myself, is I like the way the town is. Listen, I think it belongs. I mean, it's nice, you know? At the same time, there's a balance where I don't want to lock everything up and say, no, you can't build a doghouse on your property anymore because nothing's going to change from the 1800s.
Yes.
So...
I don't think anything we did makes that happen. I think you might have to be thoughtful about it and there are occasions where you might have somebody weighing in on that Act 250 process based on the town plan, but nobody said, don't develop it. They just said, be thoughtful about it.
So I'm going to read through this and it may take a while. That's where I say, well, I'd like to get this and forget nothing else but the...
Yes, this seems like a priority.
Yeah. We do have to...I would budget a little bit of time for the budget because between now and next meeting, the Select Board expects me to show up with a budget proposal. I've got last year's proposal, I'll show you and I'll ask you if you want to make changes, add some track, what we want to do with that. It should be five minutes, but we got to have time for that. I'm going to read. If the proposal would alter the designation of any land area, the report should cover the following points. I will start with a question. Does our proposal alter the land area? And that's why I asked intent. And I might start with, our intent was not to alter the land areas, but maybe it was, I don't know.
I think we're just being compliant with new regulations and recommendations from the state and the Wyndham Regional Commission. I think we're just trying to meet their guidelines. That's my memory. Is that not your memory?
But there were changes from the last map, areas that were white before.
Or have different names. I don't know that they're total changes.
Well, no, if you...
I see them, but I'm just saying, like, there's different categories on both of them, so the categories don't match. They weren't going to match another one.
Not apples to apples, yes.
Well, and here is a data point. I did not make colleagues...
Yeah, I have no agenda. Let me just be clear. I have no agenda here at all. I just...
The question that came up was, you know, why is, for example, why is one side of Route 35 resource land but not the other side? All the way up to Chester Town Line.
And I'm going to remind you that you were in...you weren't. Yeah, you were in the meetings. It'd been a year ago. This is, and I didn't make copies of it, and apologize, the blue paper was within the copying machine went right through. The date is important on this. It's 2014. This is the regional town plan and I can pass it around, but you will find in the graph in area, their dark green, light green matches our 2014 map. All right? Biofinder and Act 71 came in and A and R has new data points, has new information. And so this is from the Biofinder's newest data points of the term being high priority interior habitat forest blocks, which is Act 171. And so the dark green was a...again, our cartographer has the magic of the software to do it, was based on that.
But even this was questioned with the wildlife quarter. It appeared, you know, this is open and they would have to go through the village or below. And that was questioned and it's a reasonable question, I think.
And I think, I don't know, but I think part of this is the state and the town, this is plural, finding the balance between local control and what's best for the state. If there's a quarter that goes right through town, what do we say? No, there's not? That's a data point. That's not a choice by anybody. That's the links and the cougars choosing that, not us. So if we say, no, we're not going to allow them to go that way, let's cross it out. That's where it's at. Now, we do have the right to say, this map, you know what, we're going to say the heck with Act 171, we're going to give up all the grants, all that stuff. We're not going to be regionally approved, but we're not going to let that green come down in there anymore. You know, we're going to put up some barbed wire fence maybe.
I don't think it's people resisting the wildlife coming through the village. They just questioned that that's the primary quarter for wildlife is the village and not anywhere to the northeast of that.
And yeah, I didn't put the maps together. That's a cut and piece from the Biofinder that one you got me in hand right there.
You know, I'm driving this, you know, and seeing the wildlife cross and I know, you know, they're not just crossing in the village.
Yep. Yeah, I don't know. I just...this is the map. And again, Jeff Nugent, I think is his last name?
Yes.
You know, it's a software package. So he didn't go in and manually draw any lines. He turned layers on.
Right.
And transferred them down and that's where that came from.
I suspect you'll find that the A and R data at the very basic level is not terribly accurate, but macro level is.
It's good point.
And it's up to us to figure out where the actual boundaries should be based on what we can see and what we can bring in for people that aren't wildlife biologists. It's obvious that you shouldn't have a dark green point coming right down into the middle of the village. Critters don't like to pass through there. They...there's a river there, there's roads, there's people, dogs. It's just not a place where they're going to come. So I think we shouldn't place too much faith in the accuracy of the fine detail from this Biofinder.
And as a reminder, of all the maps we have in life, this one, it's the proposed map, is the only one that we have control over. But we do have control over it. And if we look at this after a while and say, you know what, let's move that up a half a mile up the hill and make that white and make that...make it village, make it whatever. We have every right to do that. I always ask that we maybe counsel with the WRC to see what they say and then might say, you know what, bring it down 100 feet. Okay, we can have that discussion, but...right. Now, my plan is to put together something basically that says that. And we've got two different directives. We're kind of off on the second one and that's fine. I didn't plan on talking about that, but they intertwine kind of thing. At this point, and I don't know that Al particularly will ever vote for the plan as it sits, and I understand that. The Select Board's plan is to have a hearing, not edit this map, at least that's what you're thinking, and then vote directly after? Are they going to have a...the Select Board has a meeting right after the hearing, but it's going to be that.
If there are no changes yet.
Right. Okay. I have said before, you look at the agenda, I have it there, under Roman numeral 6B timeline, I envision a monthly theme on this adopted plan so that over a 12-month period, each chapter will be looked at intensely. Chapter 2, the land use chapter.
You're talking for the purpose of amendment?
Yes. A year from now, amendment, it's always been my goal, a year after adoption. Not exactly a year, a year and five months, whatever it takes. That one chapter of land use, might somehow, that meeting, be more than just this meeting. Say, no, we're gonna hold it in the gym, or we're gonna advertise it even the, everywhere and saying, this is maybe the most important community meeting, outside town meeting, that you should go to and prep it. We have maps, we're gonna talk about this, let's have that discussion. So. You're on the select board, you were there in the discussion, I was not. They asked for an explanation of where this came from. You do notice that, you know, we, that, we as a group, we started with the, what I could call the crayon map. Remember, I had a crayon drawing, and that's where we voted on that. This is just a pre-version of that. And there is properties, for example, around Red Orchard Road, even though that is all green here, we said, anybody's property that's on the road, that line between rural residential and resource will be their, their property line. And that's kind of the same as true going down Townsend Road and everything else. Those are, for the most part, I believe, property-based lines, and that's kind of why they zigzag and so forth.
But I think Al was, you know, asked why, it wasn't the same for his room, granted, it's not as densely developed.
And I think that was the reason. I ask, this is a planning commission, we're gonna take input from all community members. Al is a community member when he talks about his house, kinds of things, alright? Does anybody have an opinion on that? Should we put on every road? I mean, if you choose Al's road, for God's sake, you gotta choose everyone, because you don't be more desolate than that two guys. Should the roads all have that boundary of one piece of property around every road?
I certainly don't object to that. Do you?
That could put property owners at ease, whereas, there are concerns about undue restrictions because they're, they're now in the green.
Now, you gotta be careful, because some of these guys own 10,000 acres, and, you know, they're.
Well, I think you're talking about somebody who has residence.
Right.
Okay, so, I don't, I don't, when you say somebody who has residence. Yes.
Versus just, yeah, production land?
Yes.
Homesteads.
Sure, they're homestead plus whatever, they're actively using it as their property boundary as opposed to, oh, I own 10,000 acres that's separate from my house.
And, you know, that might be something easy to ask Jeff to do, is, is, well, we can do it ourselves, because we have proper maps.
We've got the software.
Yeah, right, and what would that really look like?
That, we pay the tax dollars to do that, so I'm okay.
You know, because even that, I question, when he comes down Townsend Road, as I look at that,
Yes.
that's not property lines.
No, I can't tell.
Well, you think of, what's the stone ledge, or what's the,
Yeah.
what's the place you went to?
River ledge.
The River Ledge. That's a lot more property than right along the road, that's like a 250-acre spread back up in there.
Sure, but it may be all, it may be all along the road and not.
No, because I've seen that, it goes way back up in there.
So we need an explanation from Wyndham Regional about how they derive this.
Well, I'll check my notes, I, I can check with them, I don't find the answers. But everything on here was my directive to, and going down and meeting with Jeff about everything on here. You know, I didn't say, and watch him draw every line, but I have all these notes of all of why he decided, why he decided. He didn't decide anything, and I don't want that going to Minnesota or anywhere else, it was mine giving him decisions.
Sure, but I don't think your intention was to make the whole right side of Chester Road, the east side, white and the, you know, west side, green.
And I think I'm almost positive that was property-based.
Even then, I don't think so.
Well, you know what the other thing might have been? Resource definition is 25% greater more, and that seems to go right up to the 25% gradient line.
Could be.
The definitions are completely different from O8 to today.
Yes.
Yeah, so it's like.
So, let's look at O8's map and how wrong that is, not how wrong our map is. Take, for example, above Hopewill. They've got rural residential, everything past Hopewill Village, and there's nothing, homes are out there.
Yeah, really.
They've got that all in white.
I guess they just see that because you could. Because you could have, I guess.
There wasn't even any power there.
Yeah, yeah.
There still isn't any power there. So why is that rural residential?
Where's the last house in, before you go up the hill, right? Brick house there, so.
So they've got that designated as a village, but then beyond that, they've got that in white, that shouldn't have been.
And again, to start with, if our task is to explain how they're different, I started with the definitions, and there's no definitions other than the elevation. So I don't know how to explain whether they're the same or not. The line's similar, as well as, you know, they, you know, they're very similar. Well, let me, let me go back, because let's see what jumps out. And, and shout out suggestions of how I approach this. Um, I, the report should cover the following points. One, the probable impact of surrounding areas, including the effect of any resulting increase in traffic, and the probable impact of overall pattern of land use.
I think there's general effect on that one.
Yeah.
None?
Right.
I agree, I just didn't wanna be the first. The long-term cost or benefit to the municipality based on consideration of the probable impact on the municipal tax base, the need for public facilities.
None.
For, for B, none, A, I'm not sure how we determine that, you know, with the listeners being able.
Right. That, that is like a whole separate problem that we have no control over. So I think we could say none planned, none.
Anticipated?
Yes.
Number three, the amount of vacant land which is already subject to the proposed new designation.
Uh?
The amount of vacant land which is already, there's an and, so let me read the whole thing, I guess, it's an and B. I stopped halfway through it. The amount of vacant land which is A, already subject to the proposed new designation, and B, actually available for that purpose, and the need for additional land for that purpose. I read the words, I don't know what it said.
Me either.
Good. What does that mean?
Not sure.
This comes from Vermont law.
Correct. Yeah.
I don't know who wrote this, but they sure want to be very clear with their words.
On the side note, whoever wrote it, wrote this, you see there to there? That's one sentence. That one hurt me, it took like an hour to read that, so. Saying folks. Does anybody have any idea what number three means? The amount of vacant land which is already subject to the proposed new designation and actually available for that purpose, and the need for additional land for that purpose.
Are they talking about what went from white to green?
It's unclear.
That would be my first guess, would I agree with her. I, I'm not clear.
I don't think we should be guessing what they're intent with, I think we could say, we don't understand the question. But as far as we know, there's no impact, how about that?
What I'll do is after this, I'll go meet with Bill and see if he's got any ideas what this means.
Well, or Wyndham Regional.
And that's maybe, yeah, yeah. Number four, has an A and C. The suitability of the area in question for the proposed purpose after consideration of A, appropriate alternative locations, B, alternative use for the area under consideration, and C, probable impact of the proposed change on other areas similarly designated.
It sounds to me like this is more for if you are proposing land to be developed.
Right, we have.
I agree.
Right.
And, I mean, we could just say NA.
I go back to what I, and you see why I asked the question, what was our intent?
Yes.
And if we continually say, our intent is to not increase development.
It's not to prohibit development, it's say.
Right, yes.
It's to make people think about what's the effect on wildlife corridors and other environmentally sensitive issues when they're.
And comply with, you know.
Yes, but it's not to stop anybody from using their land, or from logging it, or from farming it. So I think it's still not applicable unless you, you know, like something.
Well, I'm gonna say this on the camera, um, to make sure we're clear where I stand and what I understand is going on. When I met with Bill, he was pretty irate, in my opinion, that's a, a personal opinion, and disagreed, because after public hearing, you may remember, Al said, what if I wanna put in a 300-foot driveway, I won't be able to do it with this new rules? And I, he said, is that true? And my response was absolutely not true. There is nothing in here that would prevent you from doing that. Now, after I went away, I said, well, I didn't think of the caveat that he wants to put it across the Beaver Dam, but, you know, there's a hundred things that are Act 250 that no matter what we say, is gonna have an impact on.
So it's asking people to be environmentally sensitive, I think that's the point.
But then I talked to Bill, and Bill said, you were wrong, Dave, uh, this is gonna have that impact, because they're gonna, his opinion was, somebody's gonna wanna do something, it's gonna go to an Act 250 group, and they're gonna read your plan to say you wanted to restrict growth. And I said, well, what if we wrote in the report that was not our intent? Remember my question? He said, oh, well, then that would probably have a bearing on those Act 250 things. So our report actually can be used to help clarify the incredibly complex multiple pages of verbiage that we had to write to meet everything else. And I'm wondering if we put in this report, the planning commission was to not change anything, to give everybody the freedom, but to understand that the maps have changed because of A and R data, people still have the right to do that.
A and R data and Act 171.
Right, those, those two together, right.
Yes, but I think that's an important point.
Right.
Because we didn't do it just arbitrarily, we did it to be in compliance with a new regulation or law.
I'm gonna read the last one, because these last two are, the, the three and four that I just read are unclear to me. The number five, uh, the appropriateness of the size and boundaries of the area proposed for the change with respect to the area required for the proposed use, land capability and existing development in the area.
I think, again, this assumes that we're, you know, designating certain, certain tracks or certain projects or, or uses of them or not. It says, as I already said, we're just complying with the Act 171 and A and R regulations. So it's not like we are deliberately, um, re-designating land for different purposes.
It, it's.
And that's my understanding.
I'm sorry.
Maybe if you included within the definition of, in this case, resource lands, something that, um, actually encompassed our, our intent, which was not necessarily a development restriction, but a, a preservation of the wildlife corridors and habitat.
And river buffers, right?
Yeah. And river buffers, stream buffers, I think are very important to that, that end. I don't think that what we're looking at with this yellow highlighting applies to, um, our, uh, wildlife preservation efforts. But if we put in, into the definition for the resource lands, something that, um, tells what, uh, what we want to restrict within the resource lands, um, then that allows the other uses to be more freely contemplated by people. Now, talk about what we want to try to preserve within the resource lands.
Now, are you talking about the report, which is really all we have control over in this phase of the process? We will have the ability to redefine and redo anything during the amendment process once this is done.
Right, yeah.
As a reminder, resource lands, which is clearly the controversial area, Chris?
We've also included critical resource areas.
And.
And it says right here, they can be actively worked and used. So I think if you just put an asterisk and, you know, a footnote and refer to this again, that's gonna, I think, persuade, I don't think people are putting two and two together here. They're looking at this and going, eek, eek, and not going, oh, this says, right in clear English, it can be worked and used.
That's why I put it in there.
Yes, but I just think if we just, it's not just changing it in any substantial way, because remember, we're allowed to, like, amend it without making substantial changes. If we just say, see definition of rural, uh, of resource lands, I think that's gonna solve everybody's problems. They're concerned about something that they weren't able to match up easily.
That, that could persuade some of the concerns. Um, Dave, just one admin note. Reduce this note here to down to one line.
You voted to reduce it, correct?
Yes.
I printed this from my files.
Okay.
Alright, but it's, I, yeah.
This map is for planning purposes in general, and so I, I think we retain just the last sentence of the verbiage that's printed on here.
Um, as a note, that is a boilerplate that just says it puts on all the maps that are proposed, and, and so, I don't see any reason to cut it short, though. It's not like full of roads, we gotta keep.
I don't understand.
It, it's what they wanted.
Why is that?
The problem.
No, I just don't understand the quest, like, what the problem is.
I don't know either, but. Again, across costs, I can't even read it anymore. But that's what they wanted, they wanted the last sentence left.
Again, there were, it was, there was concern about it being overly restrictive, that was the, the driving concern.
But it's still part of the town plan.
It is, yeah.
So what is it, why do you take that out?
I, I think the, the feeling was, um, it was less restrictive without.
Not district, keep that whole thing right there. Worded well.
Well, show up on Thursday, because this is out of our hands, it's in their hands, and, um, I'm glad you brought that up, Chris. Yeah, I forgot that they, they waved that out on the, the newer.
Was that at the segment meeting? I don't remember if it's coming first, I can get to it, I can make it.
The, the last meeting.
Correct, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, this was really the only contentious thing in the last meeting, wasn't it?
I just don't get why it's contentious.
Well, I don't remember it being a big.
I'm not assisting in ways.
It's called hitting higher on the height.
It's what?
It's called hitting higher on the height.
Is that what we call it?
What does that mean?
Just think about it.
So.
Hey, dear.
Let me refocus what we need to get done. On the two directives. One is an explanation to the select board of how this map was created.
Yes, and I think we've been clear on that. Yes?
And I, I wanna make sure I understand, because I'm gonna put something right in for these guys. Um, and we will not meet before the December 1 meeting. Um, my hope would be to get something to you at least a couple of days before and say, this is what I'm gonna say, I'm writing.
December 1?
No, excuse me. December 1 is that artificial date that I set for me to get to the select board this stuff. December 12th is the legal date.
And we do have one regularly scheduled meeting on the 10th.
Correct. Right, Tuesday, we have a regular meeting, the hearing is on the 12th, exactly right. Alright, I think I can do that, I'll include some other maps, resources, that kind of thing.
So can we discuss changing this at all?
We can discuss it, but I wouldn't do it in this meeting, because we have no right to. You have the right to go to the hearing on Thursday and make any recommendations, and they have the right to say, hey, Matt's got a good idea, let's do that. If they do that, in the, the, the December 12th meeting, excuse me, December 12th meeting, um, they're all Thursdays.
Yeah.
Then they have to re-warn that, and that hearing is no longer the final hearing. They gotta have another hearing. Once they do that, you're hitting the September 15th date, and it all comes back to us, and we'd have to do it anyway.
Because that question could come up with anyone. Anyone who lives out here.
Yes.
Like Al, could say, I want this to be rural residential.
So maybe we could put in our report that this, how about this, the planning commission is open to modifying the map in the future to include any land that has a homestead on it, that's along.
Making it rural as a township.
Yes.
Township, whatever the other one is.
Does that seem like that would answer, because it'll be in the minutes if there's ever an Act 250 hearing, and we could say we'd make that a priority when we're amending the town plan next time. So I don't want anybody to feel like they're being singled out. I think this really did come from data that had nothing to do with where C D lived, because it doesn't say there's any restriction, I wasn't worried about it.
I am going to say, disagree with that, after looking at this all of a sudden?
Yeah, why?
And I'm gonna say, and if they wanna do it, I'm okay with it. I'm gonna say I disagree with it, because to honor the definitions, the definition of productive rural is not just that you have a homestead. It's more of an industrial definition, that this land has less critters on it, less wildlife on it, um, and it, it's used more intensely than the other lands. And when you look at those lands, they are more used. And when you look at those lands, they are more used, um, over the generations. Um, they've been beaten up more, they, they've been, those kinds of things.
You've got more logging?
What's that?
Logging.
Mostly logging. Um, as you know, you get up into that area, there's a crap load of rock walls up in there, so it was full clear cut back in 1900, obviously. Um, so the soil's been turned a thousand times and, um, versus these other lands, according to BioFinder, they've not been used for agriculture over and over again, mostly because it's cracking land for agriculture. It's steep, steep, rocky hills. All of that said, if the Select Board wants to put the corridors and widen that and call it productive rural, it doesn't, I can't see how it has a real negative impact on what I envision as town beings.
But they just questioned the black-white separation.
Yes.
Here, which is pretty clear cut. And then Joe is also questioning, you know, this area behind his house that is all, you know, very steep slope, but it's not really usable for much of anything productive.
And that was pure that. No other thought than, well, it's that.
But that said, with the advent of all our equipment, thirty years ago, we couldn't be building what we're building now. So thirty years from now, we'll be electric excavator. Who knows where it can go?
Yes.
You know, and, and be creating productive land.
We got a house up on Fisher Hill that ten years, fifteen years ago, we would've bet a hundred bucks no we could ever build that. That's a hydro driveway they put in there, but good equipment.
Did you catch the electric excavator? Did you catch the electric excavator?
Gotta agree with it.
There's just an awful lot of pressure to build, um, throughout the land. So, uh, what we have to do is to, um, provide some foresight as to how we can coexist with wildlife while at the same time accommodating where we have to, uh, the increased pressure of people wanting to build. Cause that is, that's gonna happen. Climate change is gonna push people out of the, the seacoast and, and they're gonna head north. Wait, wait. Why are they, they're leaving the seacoast? Cause they're getting wet.
Chris Cackney has a lot of data that shows, in his opinion, if you know Chris, he runs the Wyndham Regional, um, that there is over the next, he can't put a time on it, ten years, almost like a bubble that's gonna burst up the I-91 corridor up into Wyndham. He, he sees it happening down in Greenfield.
Oh, population watching.
Population.
I thought you were talking about.
No, 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 no.
Yeah, I think that water. I really did, I'm like, what?
Oh, I'm sorry. No, there is, there is economic development happening south of the border. And in his opinion, and that's why, every time I talk to him, it's what he talks about.
It's already happening.
Yeah.
It goes right up the valley, right into the upper valley.
What's interesting about his vision is, I see it happening. It's evolutionary. He thinks this burst mentality is just gonna happen very quickly, all of a sudden, and it just keeps coming. Nobody can predict the future.
Either way, nobody's saying they can't build, right?
True.
Right? Nowhere in this definition is anybody saying, "If you're white or green, you can't build."
My completely, I, I said in the meeting, if somebody buys a plot of land up there and wants to put a 300-foot driveway in, I'm hoping there's nothing in here that says they can't. Now, they say a 1,200-foot driveway, you just crossed a thousand foot. That's Act 250. Now, I'll ask Eric, cause you're most experienced in this. Act 250 goes into a place, they're gonna look at this map, right? I wanna put a thousand, 1,200-foot driveway in.
And Act 250 could come in at any time right now, even.
What impact would our work have on an Act 250 permitting process? Let's just say it's a residential, not, let's not go to your windmills and, "That's Act 248 anyways."
It would have a heavy impact.
And how so? Elaborate.
They, they come and refer to your town plan.
Okay.
When they're making judgments in Act 250.
So how will our town plan affect the PUC or whoever does the Act 250 permitting? You, you've read it. You've looked at our maps. Think about the old map. You were around when that was designed. How would their reaction be different from the old map and the new map?
They would probably take into account how these definitions that we're using here are used elsewhere in the, in the area and region. And, um, would make some judgment about what our intent was, whether we expressed it or not, if we're using the same language as what the, the common parlance is. So, that's why I'm saying that if we get the opportunity to, um, add some verbiage to our definitions later on, when we amend this again, um, we ought to talk specifically about what we're trying to accomplish with resource lands.
But right now, that stuff that's white, that everybody's concerned about, right? Is it the white part of it?
No, it's the green part they're worried about.
Well, but Joe's property is in the white part. That's why I'm confused.
He questioned that.
Oh, it, it's, it's incon, almost self-inconsistent with what we recognize as the terrain around this, and that's why.
Well, it says high value forest, and I assume that somewhere up there, so they have logging on the other side of that hill, that that's high value forest. I'm not sure what he's concerned about here.
You're in about 1450, right?
That's the old.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But that's the ridge he's talking about.
I don't know if it elevates.
If you're looking at the top of it.
But it's probably close.
It's right there. Where all, where all the lines come close together, that's the steeper contour.
And how do you know that's 1450? Have you read that?
Because it's on this map, greened in.
I thought you were reading from this one, I'm like, ooh.
No. Do this. There.
Could you look at this for a moment? So we're all on the same page. Eric, I wanna, and again, we, we're not gonna be able to change this now, so this is a little bit of something we'll put in our bin for later. But looking at resource lands, something that is maybe missing, and I'm thinking the Act 250 permitting, is can the green be developed? Yes or no? That's what they would ask, isn't it?
Yeah.
What's the answer based on our writing?
It says right here, look, "Future development should be weighed against the desire to preserve the area." That's the answer to your question.
Judgment call.
And who makes that judgment? Them. The Act 250 council.
Sure, but taking this document into consideration. And what the wildlife pattern is, and whatever else is the problem there. Like, you know, if you're trying to build on a stream, they're gonna look at that versus, oh, you wanna build, you know, a hundred feet away.
So the town plan could be the first stop on an Act 250 permit, right?
Yep.
So you can stop it here before Act 250 can say, "Oh, that's okay." The local plan go, "No, not at all." We could modify how they would make their judgments, I think, by what we write.
Is there a roadblock here? If somebody had, it's for an Act 250 permit, would they come to our town plan and say, "Well, that ends that process, cause this says no"?
Yeah, I think so.
You think it does say no?
If we said no?
But are we saying no?
It says, "Resource lands can be actively worked and used."
Yes. And it just says, "The development should be weighed against the desire to preserve the area."
Yeah, which is not a definitive.
Right. Yeah, so I think it.
You know, here's an edit.
On the other hand, look, look just a little bit higher with your critical resource areas.
Which is a subject, subject, before we leave, I've gotta talk about, um, Al brought up a really good point that I didn't think about on that, but I wanna put that in the minute. I, I would question maybe for the Select Board, maybe, but for everybody, multiple part. I am gonna take the resource lands and make one incredibly minor change. I wanna know how much change it has to the document. Right now, it says, "Resource lands can be actively worked and used, but future development should be weighed against desire, desire to preserve the area." Here's my change. I'm simply gonna take out the word "but" and put a period after the word "used." Resource lands can be actively worked and used. Future development should be weighed against desire to preserve the area. And it's different, actually, in my mind, but the same.
It sounds strange to me, but I don't think.
It, it does, but it's a little stronger saying, "It's okay to develop." You know, that "but develop" is almost like a, but be very careful about it. And I wanna be careful.
Yes, it's, it's conditional.
Face off.
Right. And the comma shouldn't be there before "but" anyways, the, the grammatical error. I'm just wondering, so my question to you is, would they be allowed to change that at the December 12th meeting? It's just that minor change. Would it make anybody happier and would it prevent it being, from being adopted that night?
Uh, it would probably make people happier. Um, it's the interpretation is a substantial change.
I don't think it is, it's like getting rid of the word "but" is gonna be a substantial change, even I would like, pretty.
But. Given what we've been through.
It's a suggestion I'm making, and if people are okay with it, I'd actually like to email Joe and Al, maybe the whole Select Board and all, saying.
Everyone.
You know, maybe I'll look formally and say, "Look, you asked to report on the changes. Here's a report. Include the report. Here's something that might make everybody happier." And, and that one change is all I can think of. Thoughts?
I'm just wondering if they didn't read it at all, is my, like, they just looked at the map and didn't read the definitions. Cause I don't think the "but" matters, but I don't care if you change it. If you, you'll better change it, how about it, from my end.
I'm, I'm gonna start with what you're saying is, listen, be clear on what we're talking about here. That it does say, "Development should be weighed," but we're not saying, "Don't develop in these areas."
Right. And what do you?
Well, Eric mentioned, "Look above the critical resource area," read that, and then look at the pink over on the new map. Does anyone on the Select Board, Chris, have issue with the critical resource areas that you're aware of?
Yes, but in a different way than you might be thinking, and I think it's something that needs to be discussed. He brought up the Lowell Lake situation, that the town plan is written in a way that the state is having a problem developing their own land. And Al said, "If you put any of these resource areas in any of state land, you're gonna run into that if somebody wants to fix something at the Turner place, your town plan says they can't do that."
It says you can't fix it. It says you can't develop it. There's a difference to fixing.
What if they wanna build her old place? Cause right now, just the guest house is there. And they say, "You know what? We wanna rebuild the restoration of her original base."
Anything?
What are you talking about now?
Um, Turner.
Which isn't even really, uh, critical.
Oh, it's not? I thought it made it.
It's not, there.
Yeah, just that little section. But the house would be out.
And Brad was not in.
Yeah. Technically, if that's critical, um, it's the expressed desire of the town that no development occurs here. That would tell the Act 250 board that we don't want them doing anything. Building a walkway out of the swamp, for example. It's a beautiful swamp out there. So, we're not gonna be able to do anything between nine and December 12th, but Al brought that up, and I never looked at it from that way. I think it's something at some point that we need to make sure is not a roadblock to some of these things these folks may want in the future that brings better things to our town.
Do you think you could put in the report that we're sensitive to the concerns raised by some individuals about lack of development for letting people access and, um, enjoy that property? And that we can, will consider modifying that in our next revision?
I don't know if I can or not. It's an interesting point, cause the way the report is, it's pretty black and white in terms of.
We could put it in parenthetically.
Yeah, yeah. I, I haven't figured out the format of this yet, other than I've read the, uh, the Wyndham Town Report, which was helpful for me. I didn't read it before, and I read it in, yes, it is a nice layout and a nice way to go, so.
To directly answer your question, um, when you talked with, um, John Matt or Chris down there on the regional, did they say anything about, uh, what they consider to be critical resource areas?
No, in fact, you know, I do not have the, uh, Wyndham Regional Plan here. Um, you'll notice, I don't know if I've got it here, somewhere, you know, I, I give you one page, so I may not have it here. You notice on the graphic map, it does not have critical resource areas. They do not have a separate bulleted list of critical resource areas, but in the regional town plan, under resource areas, they have a last paragraph saying something to the nature of, although it's not separate designation, there are areas that are so important that we need to consider making this another designation in the future. So, you know, it's, it's not on theirs. It's a separate one that we added behind that.
Um, because I, I knew that the language existed in the plan, that no land was designated that way by under regional.
And it may be that they did not, maybe the future one, I don't know. Again, that was my thought when I was thinking this through, was a lot of Al and me and everybody else that I talked to is, you know, you look at these six designations, and, and really, you know, the eight designations, we're not a resort center, we're not a large scale, we're not a, all these other things, so we're really only have three to choose from. And I, and I felt that if you have three to choose from, and one is resource, that means that's the most extreme, most strict. And I didn't like that. I wanted that piece that says, "It's still your land." But I did like saying, "You know what? Our village park, you know, that, that's different." Um, you know, I, we had to talk about the three rivers and, and the three streams that go up there, and that is, you know, I'm not a huge environmentalist, but I did a lot of research, and it turns out there is a crap load of unique font, birds and bungs and rocks and stuff right along those stream beds that, and on top of that, and this is your area, not mine, you start messing with that and you're dealing with flooding problems all the way down, right? And that was the rationale for those three. Everything else, as you can see, was just, um, state park, town park, et cetera. I don't wanna get into it too much, but again, my point is, I, I think Al brought up a really interesting, important point, that we need to make sure that we don't restrict people from doing that. Honestly, if we had made that, those areas, if we made Durant State Forest white, how would that affect how they deal with Durant State Forest? I don't think they're gonna go in there and develop it anyways, so.
No, but I think we don't, I think the town does not want those state lands developed as a rule. But I do think that everybody would be okay with allowing improved access to them.
Um, I guess my attitude is, I trust the state. You own the land, you take care of it. I do, I do. You know, the A and R guys wanna do what's best, and I don't think they're gonna put in a big logging road and drop in a house in the middle of it, but they might, I don't know.
I'm skeptical since, although to be fair, there was offense that we're allowing all kinds of ridiculous things to happen in the big national, um, national forests, so that puts shape in my faith in preservation.
I think I have my marching orders for Directive Number Two, which is to explain to the Select Board the rationale and decision-making process for the differences in the old map to the new map. The first directive is to use the, it doesn't say clearly, "Use the Wyndham model," but as I put in my notes, the fact that they put it in the minutes tells me that's the one they like. Basically, if you've not read it, you don't have to read the whole thing. Its layout is really straightforward, and it starts, "Chapter One, Land Use." The old chapter and the new chapter have these changes. This is why we made the changes, and this is why it's important. Chapter Two, Historic Cultural Resources. We made no changes of any significance to Chapter Two. Chapter Three, and they go through all that. So, I know you guys have not read this thing for a year, but I'm gonna ask this anyways. Through the best of your knowledge, think about it a little bit. The land use chapter is gonna be a whole piece by itself. We've already discussed that. Any big radical changes on, and again, thinking about the yellow list, did we change anything in the Historic Cultural Natural section that will have an impact on taxes, transportation, all that stuff?
No.
We increased and clarified the number of historic districts, we, and that stuff.
So that allows people to apply for grants if they ever get a village designation, but it doesn't change anybody's tax.
But we didn't go in and, and say, you know, if you own a historic building, we think you should double the taxes on it. We didn't go in and say, "Let's create a whole zone of, for recreation," or anything like that. The economy, I can't think of anything we changed on that. You know, other than there'll be some redundant statements by me saying, "Reality's changed in the last eight or nine years, so some of our data points have changed, but our goals and our vision has not changed." It's kind of the recurring theme. Getting some head nods? Uh, roads and transportation? Anything in there that jumps to mind? I mean, I'm gonna read the old chapters and the new chapters and go through this again, but I'm hoping to get some input.
It's a lot of work, a short period of time.
I know. I was in tears when I left Bill's office. I had to cry and fit. Is there anything that you can think of? I'll double check, but I'm not thinking of anything radical.
I'm just looking at their examples.
No, okay.
But.
So what do I write for the energy chapter?
You say the energy chapter. Changes reflected the town vote.
That's not true though, it's a false statement, it has nothing to do with the town vote. There's nothing in that chapter that has anything to do with the town vote. That chapter was simply cut and paste from the Wyndham Regional template with our data put in.
Except for the industrial wind, there's somewhere in there, there's some said statement about. The industrial wind specifically, it's only those sentences, like two sentences.
And I honestly have not read the two thousand whatever year it was, uh, moves less.
Eight.
Two thousand eight town plan and what the energy chapters said.
How might have been before that we modified that first before you were on the board, it's been so long, I can't remember, it must be goodness.
Well, the energy chapter, yeah, I'm, I'm the guy that wrote the energy chapter, so I'm, yeah, yeah, I did that last, no, two years ago, I can't remember.
Well, doing a thorough review tonight was just a difference in the figures.
Yeah, those were clerical errors that got corrected.
Yeah, that was just clerical, yeah.
For the million times you look through that and there's still, you're like, you gotta be kidding me, I can't believe we missed those. Uh, it was decimal point stuff, you know, we're spending eight trillion dollars a year on energies, it was one of the thick years or something.
Three hundred and sixty-two million.
Is that what it was, yeah?
Just 2.36.
God, we're having to go through this.
What, whatever happened to some of the old Dropbox? Files that were out there, I can't access them anymore.
I'm guessing Chuck eliminated them. Because I went in there to grab some stuff last two weeks ago and there was only like five files in the town plan.
So he's using.
That was my resource for all of, for two years and now it's gone.
I discovered that just before he sent that email.
So can he undo that, do you think?
My guess, he's got everything archived everywhere and I can make sure we ask him about that, yes.
Cause that could go back to even the decimal point where we talked about it and had it changed, I remember we talked about other decimal points with Chuck.
Yes, absolutely.
Whether they got changed or not, we don't know, cause you read through it again, you've got it in your mind as one way and you read through it and you don't realize the mistake.
As a backup, every, cause I've been the holder of the file for quite a while. Every change, um, I saved as a new file, I've got many, many, many versions of that town plan saved by date. For fear that, you know, like when do we make that change and all that, at some point I wanna eliminate them, but I, I bet you anything Chuck ever had in that Dropbox, since I've been on the board, I, I've always kept, so.
You deserve a medal.
I'm just on the pack grant, it's the way I do things, so. So let's be clear what you want me to write on energy chapter, I'd like to start with, this energy chapter was developed from scratch, it was not an edit to the old chapter. And we started with the Wyndham Regional's template that they developed and piloted on three other towns.
Okay.
Um, we were given the data source, I have the spreadsheet and I'll talk about, we just used our data. But your point is important, there were subtle, long discussions to make subtle edits on the, the template. And so I should go back and find those and make sure that we. Address them clearly.
And just that reflected the. Vote by the town regarding industrial wind.
And I'll read and try and find the site page and say, page fifteen chapter two.
And the definition of commercial, industrial, we spent a whole night on that.
Right, yes.
Yeah, we adopted the definitions in the end from the Wyndham Regional Marion Major in, in her definitions. Cause I remember Lisa had definitions from someplace else for a long time that, um, I, I don't remember, alright. I'm gonna send a draft out before I submit it to the board and look at some. Education, I guess I'm just gonna write that the facts of the ground are radically changed, our vision and goal has not, that we continue to want our own elementary school and that kind of stuff.
That sounds fair.
Alright, uh, housing?
Does that include senior housing?
It's got a section in there.
Not enough.
There's some senior housing in there.
One of the select board has not happened to get enough about it, it's in there.
It is, it is in there, they just, you know, weren't aware of it.
So they're happy with it now?
I, I believe so, once it was put it out that it's already a policy and a goal.
Yeah, right, you talked, you talked, you mentioned it the other night, didn't you?
Yes.
You know, I think after this discussion, I might start and look at the table of contents with an introduction overall blanket statement that says. There's been a ma, I'll use prettier terms than my words I'm about to use, but say there's been a massive amount of changes at state law level. Act one seventy-one, this, that, you know, energy, on and on and on, um, throughout this new plan, we have worked to balance. Meeting those requirements with meeting the desires and vision of the town and that's what we tried to do and whether it's. Like I say, the energy, education, et cetera, that's kind of what I'm looking at.
That's perfect, I'm glad you are recording this, you said please, yes.
It'll be on tomorrow night and I'll go through all this, alright.
I think that was good language.
Okay, um, then I'll, I'll go with that, housing will be the same, recreation kind of falls in that same thing, I'm not gonna write a lot, we haven't said we wanna build a ski resort or anything like that.
No, I think we did, if I remember, it's been so long, but talk more about making sure to plan for more pedestrian and bicycle friendly.
Okay.
Roadways and I, so I'm pretty sure that was a specific change.
And honestly, that, and I'll put that in there, I remember discussing that, that's part of our desire for grants and such, by putting it in there, it opens up other opportunities, kinds of stuff, so.
Yes. Yes. Yes.
And that could be even in that blanket statement.
Well, that's kind of where I was going with it, shouldn't cost the town any money, we didn't require them to do anything, but it allows us to, to apply for grants.
County government services? Changes. I don't know, they're factual changes. But again, the vision, the goals, the, the overall. Direction that we want the town to go was not a.
No.
That's a fair thing. And now I'm gonna stare rate at Eric. Chapter ten, flood resiliency. How has that changed from two thousand?
It's a whole new chapter.
Did it exist in two thousand and eight or didn't even exist, oh, so I don't have to do a comparison?
Yeah. I think it's back to your land.
Oh, that was what I was afraid of, I was like, oh, cause that's technical, that's really.
Well, the flood zoning board was, was in there, the zoning board and what regulations were back then.
Yeah, we didn't have a flood resiliency chapter. Was there any? So what went on with hazard in the old plan? I don't know. What drove us to add flood resiliency?
State law.
That's how I would thought, but I just wanna make sure that that's what I'll talk about, state law dictates we have to have, this is a brand new chapter and we believe it meets verse in letter of the state law. Okay, um, license, grass, minutes, neighbors, we've got the same neighbors, we're happy with them, we hope they're happy with us.
We're happier now that the Chester Road is dropped, so.
That's wonderful, that is a wonderful thing.
Go ahead.
Don't start. So, so there's two documents going out, little bit of redundancy because the land use chapter, but the approach is like I just said, we're gonna just. A brief sentence or two about most of them, maybe a paragraph or more about a couple, cause I gotta go into explanation. Um, the Wyndham one was about a page and a half, two pages long, so I'm not looking at writing a twenty-page essay on this, this is the, the big pieces.
Just over a page.
Just over a page, okay.
And I hope that squashes some people's concerns about, you know, what was the intent.
And that's one of my goals, is to clarify some of those concerns, um, mostly the report might have a, a cover letter to go with it, I, I don't know, I haven't thought that through.
They changed the picture, photo on the front?
They did change the photo on the front, yep. Which now that it's been changed and we're recording, I'm glad, cause I just took that off the internet, well, I know that's copyrighted somewhere and I didn't even look it up, so.
Is it our town hall?
Well, yeah, I don't know who took that picture. Alright, so four town plan, those are the two things we're doing, when we meet in December, the, it'll be two days before the town plan is adopted. Um, my goal is to have a discussion about it, but not move forward with my big goal of starting editing, cause I don't think it's appropriate until it's an adopted plan. So the next meeting, I'd like to really make sure that we have the community survey would be the major thing we will talk about. Anything else under town plan?
You said you're just gonna draft a forty-three eighty-four report?
Yes.
And just email it to us, we don't.
To the planning commission first.
Right.
For your approval that says, yeah, that's what we wanted to say, once I get that, then it's going to the select board.
Okay, then you don't think we need to schedule a meeting?
I don't, unless there's.
Is everyone else concerned?
Concerned about that.
If, if we all disagreed today, I would say we needed another meeting, but it doesn't, it sounds like we all agreed on the language.
Yeah, I'm looking for one, but.
I'm just looking for verification that I captured your thoughts correctly, kinds of thing.
Okay.
Um, we'll, we'll see what we go on that.
And we do have a meeting on the tenth, if it?
Yeah.
It's crunch.
Okay, village center designation update, that's all I have tonight, um, I went down and had a meeting with Jeff Nugent about. Uh, based on, if you remember, we had. Can't remember his name, the guy, Amori, Richard Amori came and we walked the town, we laid out the map, he said, it's a little bit big, but he thinks it's okay. So I went down and we went through line by line, all of that, um.
A bridge presentation.
What's?
A great presentation that he gave us.
Yeah.
Which I think he should come and talk to the select board about that.
Yeah, me too, at some point.
Have another, have another, uh.
Or even town meeting.
Or even a.
No, I mean like real town meeting.
Yeah.
Yeah, we can talk to him about it, yeah.
If you take up some time, but the select board needs to hear what he said.
Okay, and then if you talk about that with a select board member here, it's good point. Um, the, for whatever reason, the people that approve the village centers are not meeting in November or December, their next meeting is January. And so we're in pretty good shape, he's working on that, we don't have a town plan anyways, um, I've gotta do a little bit of work. Lisa took really, really nice pictures. Jeff looked at all of them and said, none of them work, every one of them is not what they need, every picture she took was at a building. They were discreet, discreet individual buildings, he says, they need city, they need escapes, they need, if you wanna hight the inn, take a shot down the village with the inn in the corner.
Huh.
And I'm like, you're kidding me, so I took, I'm surprised, I took ninety-five pictures in one day, we're not there with.
I did go there.
Yeah, I got all the pictures taken.
I was gonna say, I have a lot of town votes.
No, and, and so, I've gotta now go with our map and put little arrows and choose which ones, but again, uh, Richard's gonna have the map done by early December, I think is what he's planning on. I'll have these pieces and he'll be ready to put the arrows on, I think he only sent about fifteen pictures is what he needs, so that's a minor piece, the map will be done, I've gone through the report. I got almost everything together in a folder, we just gotta get the approval, so that's where that's at. Questions on that? Okay, uh, community survey, my plan a week ago, cause I kinda blew it off for a while, was to really focus all of last week to have close to a draft. Ready for you to have a real discussion about, not for approval, cause I can't believe I can do a draft good enough that you're like, yeah, good enough, leave it at that. But at least good enough that we could have an intelligent discussion about it and work towards finality. Um, I got hit with this other stuff and that went way on the back burner, um, so my goal is that at the December tenth meeting, that would be the priority. And we'll really get close to getting all of the stuff, uh, what are the keys on that, if, um, we're gonna, you know, there's stuff in wastewater we want in there, all of that stuff in there. That we go to the next stage is figuring out format, delivery, if we get approval, is that what we want a grant for, it's one of the things I've talked about, if not. Um, what do we do and how do we disseminate that kind of thing? Probably as I'm thinking out loud, we go through some process that say consensus, that's what we want. And then probably be appropriate for me to take it to the select board and say, we're going to do this, what's your input or not appropriate to take it to them first?
That's polite.
That's mostly where I'm at with it, not required, it's our duty, in fact, I read it, it's in statute, we can find it, our job is to survey the community. We're doing it. Should we take, at least show them for point of interest, make sure there's no concerns or whatever, my biggest concern honestly is, oh, let's add thirty-seven questions, if we don't want that, and then. Then we gotta conflict of authority, who really gets to control this, so, but I would like to keep them informed and, and that we're doing it and get their input, kinds of things. So that's that piece, are there any questions that they would like to ask? Maybe I could get ahold of them as part of my communication here and say, we're doing this, here are our big headings, I got some big headings already. What areas are you concerned with, I mean, my guess is, they're not gonna say anything we haven't seen already, energy, fluvial erosion, you know, those things are maybe, you know.
Jobs, economic development.
Yeah. Alright. Last thing on my agenda before the end of executive session, this is the document that I sent to. The select board a year ago for our FY twenty budget, um, budgets are June, July through June.
Yes.
July through June, um, as a reminder, we do have twenty-five hundred bucks, the six hundred is now in the DRB's hands.
Okay.
Yeah, that's, you know, um, that includes. Cost of Chuck or, and those kinds of stuff, um, but it could also be if you've got, you know, well, it is just that, it's twenty-four hours, twenty-five bucks. You guys should be doing your own budget, right, you're on top, you're aware of that, okay.
I'm aware of it, yes.
Alright, um. The quick and simple is you can glance at it and say, yeah, at work, let's go with it again, or even say, boy, let's ask for a new car for everybody in the planning commission, or it's up to you, what do you wanna ask for?
Will, will there be any costs associated with, um, the project, wanna do the, the, the survey, the village center designation? That we can anticipate?
Village center, I saw no costs or no expenses for.
There'll be at least a printing cost for the survey. And then how we disseminate it, you know, if we use mailings, then there'll be additional cost there.
I, I'm a guy that used, lives by the saying, hope for the best, but plan for the worst, hoping for the best is that we decide to go for an MPG and we only need five hundred to do it. But planning for the worst is that we don't get a grant, we need the grant for something else. So I think it's fiscally responsible to put in this budget that in the next fiscal year, we wanna do a survey. And it's gonna cost the town, it's gonna cost how much, three thousand? More, less? And that, that's maybe something like a big number, but the reason I choose that is cause my goal is to use something like an miracle volunteers committee, cause the biggest factor in success in this is less about how well we write it, although that's very important. But how many we get back, and I would like to use the grant not to write it, we've got that done, but to hire boots on the ground to increase the return rate as high as possible. Maybe buying, hiring a professional company, for example. Cost of printing, um, we still not decided how we're disseminating it, for me, going online, doing a form online is incredibly quick and easy and the data comes back and I can do really quick charts and graphs. But in my research, I got lots of stuff I can share with you from, um, mostly from the regional commission and so forth, that doesn't get the most results. The most results is, and it gets more involved than just one thing, they've got a whole list, they have a list of things you should do, is to definitely send it written with a self-addressed stamped envelope included. Well, for each mailing, then you got two stamps, two envelopes, and there is gonna be a printing and so on and so forth. Issues that not answered if we go that way is, what if there's three people in the house that wanna do the, the survey? And there's a lot of other things that we have to figure out, maybe not tonight, though, alright, so.
At least one around number of what we.
Yeah.
About for the budget, yeah.
About that, last thing is, real quick, was like head of household does the survey for the property.
Right, I don't know if we can be consensus on that.
No, but we discussed it a little bit.
Yes.
And then there's the individual, uh, resident.
Well, the, the beauty of electronic is, I can have a question and say, who are you, I'm the homeowner, I, 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 I live here but don't own, et cetera, and when you click on that. It will go to one of multiple different questionnaires and stuff.
And, and renter, and then clicks down to another.
I think I have about seven different categories, actually, I own property but don't live here, I own a business but don't live here, there's a whole list that goes there. The bottom line is, forget about grants, how much money should we ask for with the intention of implementing the survey during the next fiscal year?
County household, sort of. I mean, I have a big residence.
Residence, dwellings, timber pound or land.
Yes.
Where were we with our budget here, even though we designated this amount, where's our?
Good question.
Financial statement for right now.
Um, I asked after Kim this morning, I should have asked last week, she's like, nineteen, you know. How much?
Three hundred and nineteen.
Three nineteen. Any other question where we're at right now?
I suppose.
I, I don't know specifically on the, uh, planning administrator wages, uh, cause he's got about two months still to turn in. But he doesn't use all of fifty-six hours, I don't think that's a problem. The municipal planning grant, five hundred dollars, we can't do that without an adopted plan. That said, I'll ask Eric, maybe he knows. There's a deadline for October one each year to get your grants in for the MPG. Now, when can you start putting in, in other words, if we're to put in a grant in January, is the money available?
Uh, I don't think so.
That's what I was afraid, because it's this fiscal year, ends May thirtieth or June thirtieth, excuse me. The idea is, use five hundred bucks, get one grant this fiscal year, and then put it in again and get another grant next year. Otherwise, that five hundred bucks will not be used for a matching portion of a municipal, municipal planning grant. So, um, and I really, from what your answer is, we're probably not gonna use. The, we will not be able to get a municipal planning grant between now and June thirtieth, is that accurate?
I think that's accurate, yeah.
Okay, there's a, a window or a season of when it's available. So. Question on development, I haven't spent any of that, I don't think anybody has, that's in there with the idea that just one conference, at twenty-five bucks a piece, at that time, there was seven of us. Would suck it all down, there's been two that have come across my desk that I've been interested in, just conflicts didn't go to it.
That'd also be nice if they told you about it more than a couple of weeks.
That happens a lot, you make a point.
So frustrating.
I will say though, that five hundred bucks is good through June thirtieth. And I don't like just spending down and spending tax money, but it is there if something comes up for value, but in portions. And again, the Roman numeral two is off our plates completely for next year.
Well, so if you.
Yeah, DRB.
What?
It goes with DRB, yeah.
Yeah.
Which, um.
What about Fat TV, who pays for this?
He does.
Nice guy, what a guy.
It's part of the, it's a convoluted statewide financial system, we do not get charged with municipal. Part of the mission and requirement is to broadcast and disseminate information like this, if I'm accurate, yeah.
So I won't, I won't, I won't tip you later.
So if you figure that there's.
I am big for my money and my rent.
Surveys, five hundred surveys? If you were gonna mail them, and I'm saying we are, my thought was, what the first line should be, do you want a written, do you want a written, um, survey? Then that's the end of the, you know.
Oh, you can go online and then click yes.
We aren't gonna do that.
Yeah, they were, I've even gone to the point that I've talked to Michelle about how to use the library in her services. For those that are afraid of computers, go down there and help her, you know, have them.
I don't have that many people like that anymore.
Yeah, I don't know.
So all I was gonna say was something like, well, let's just say there's four hundred people for the sake of argument that are gonna possibly need to get a written one, which is a lot, I don't think we need that many. And they need two stamps, so that's, you know, essentially a dollar a piece, you know, kind of rounding. So, and then you need to still have the thing printed, I don't know what the printing costs anymore.
Do you?
No, black and white, I'm just saying, nickel is seven cents a page, probably.
Kim or Wendy would give us a, a sense of what they pay.
Well, when you get to copying, there's copying like a big book with a lot of colors and, and there's this, do we have, we don't have a copy machine that can rip out a couple thousand copies cheaply, or? Cause if it's a multi-page.
How many pages, do you think it's gonna be, like four?
Well, that's part of the.
It's not a twenty cents piece, just say it's four, let's say, good argument.
I would say that's too big, first of all. Two pages, front and back, or four pieces of paper?
No, two pages, front and back.
Okay, alright.
So, but that's still, you're still gonna be charged twenty cents a piece, more or less, right? Just averaging, you know, like ballparking, so if you figure a dollar twenty-five, just, you know, per person times four hundred, that's still.
Six hundred, somewhere in there, five, five fifty, yeah.
So.
This is, this is for materials, though, now you have to decide if we're gonna have someone do it or we do it. If Kim does it, we have, how does that work? Cause we have to budget her to do it, right?
You mean to, to collect and all that stuff, yeah. That, that's a, a roadblock that we need to figure out and maybe, uh, what needs, well, first of all, I'm keeping really close on the times, I wanna end this. Um, not get into the discussion of the survey, we need to discuss the budget right now.
Which we're, yeah.
But that December tenth meeting, I'm gonna put some stuff together to get your brains geared up, so we show up, we'll really dive in and make some decisions on that.
So then if you still need people to walk around or whatever, it sounds like you need at least another thousand dollars for that, so no matter how you cut it, you're up to two thousand dollars, you're close. So what if we ask for two thousand, the worst that happens is, plus, you know, the other stuff. The worst that happens is somebody cuts it, but if we say specifically, you know, I think that's a reasonable round number of what it's gonna cost. And maybe it'll be a lot less.
What I just heard was Valerie making a proposal to keep the planning commission budget the same. To keep municipal planning grants at five hundred, because there may be other needs, but to add a one-time two thousand dollar line item to do this survey. Is that what I heard you make a motion of?
I'll second it.
And I heard Matt seconded it, discussion.
I think it's a good idea.
Okay, and they can make.
At least for the first time.
Okay.
For.
And it's not like we're gonna survey every year, this is.
Right, but it'll only be the template for future.
That's a big piece of what I hope does happen, yeah, you create a baseline and then you can reuse that again and again. Other discussion. Call for motion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? You staying with your select board or you're still thinking?
I'm staying.
Fair enough.
Okay.
I will figure out the process and get that information to Joe and the group. Um, he's got three or so select board meetings, but they're ten o'clock in the morning.
Yeah.
I can't do that, so I may put it in writing or I actually. Okay, alright, it's pretty straightforward, you can talk to each other, share what you think.
Okay, alright, yeah. Real quick, go back to the planning, our administrator, fourteen hundred dollars. Uh, that's based on fifty-six hours?
Yep.
Right?
Yeah, and that was just a number that Chuck and I, Chuck really came up with.
Okay, like he's not here tonight, what nights do we expect him to be here?
Only at the planning commission meetings at this point, that may be a high number, actually, because the town plan is done, you know, we can talk about lowering that.
Do we lower that?
But he's also supposed to do minutes.
Right.
There is out of work time, so.
He'll do the minutes from the.
Yeah, so there's.
Recording, correct?
Yeah, I guess as I think about it, I thought that was high, but if he just goes to twelve meetings and does nothing else, that's twenty-four hours out of fifty-six right there. Then you got the minutes, he does do other things, I've had him do research, I've had him do other things, come prepared and I want statute kind of thing. So it might be a little high, but it's not as high as I thought it was, I guess, as I think about it.
Would you like to lower it?
No, it gives us good wiggle room.
Say hi.
We don't spend it, we don't spend it, it's not.
All in favor? Of a budget as proposed with an additional two thousand dollars for a survey? Did we, oh, I thought you brought something, so I wasn't sure.
No, that's alright, that's fine.
I wanna vote twice to make sure it's solid, alright. Um, is there anything else for the agenda before we go into executive session? The next meeting is Tuesday, December tenth, six thirty, here at the Town Garage, we will now go into executive session.